You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 17th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
The United States of America, which is the Republic of the United States, our nation under our umbrella, invincible, and we're the people who have justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming. The reason why we are here for the meeting of Public Safety and Health Committee is Council President Don Prisbalinski had asked us to meet to find some solutions to the problems related to parking on the sidewalks and things like that. And so Chief of Police, I reached out to Chief Marty Corley and thanks for allowing us to use this facility also because this is a nice facility to get together. And so with that, what I will do is I will turn it over to Chief, to you, to just define us the scope of the problem. We already have an ordinance to address this. So what is the scope of the problem? What can we do to take care of this problem? And do you need any help from us on the council?
They always need more money. We actually just did a list, reference of abandoned vehicles and parking violations on the last, when I passed you all out the last couple of weeks. On prior to that, we had 98, 169, 169 parking problems. Call service initiated, 98 initiated by us setting up public. There've been a total of 28 parking tickets issued between January and June, but that does not include warning tickets. So we, except we, if you see our numbers here, still, abandoned vehicles, parking violations. I've been out and about looking for some of the parking violations that came up in some of the meetings, some of the complaints that came up that never came through our office initially, but came to the city council first. And we've just been addressing them. Corporal Wright, who was not here, he would have been here, but he's on vacation. He had a pretty planned vacation party, so he hasn't been here, but he is focusing on that now that he has no more time, you know, in his duties. One of his biggest things that takes out of his time is complaining to some of us. So now that that's all planned, we're kind of in motion with that. He is addressing these issues along with making the coordinated effort through our shifts also to assist him with the issues of parking violations and junk vehicles.
Okay. So you, so do you need any like modifications to the ordinance or are we good with what we have on the books?
I don't think there's no, as far as the parking violation, I don't think there's no, I don't think there's no justice to that, or that we need to, unless you all see something of my head.
Okay, okay, all right, very good. Councilman Lee, do you have any issues that you want to address?
Yeah, so I'm a runner. I spoke with some of my friends who are also runners to see if they had a similar, you know, running on the sidewalks. There are a lot of cars parked on the sidewalks, so for me, I just go around them in the streets. But I have some friends who have small children and strollers. So when they run with them, they don't want to go to the streets. Instead, they go into the property of the owners. And she hasn't had any issues so far. However, she was curious what the process would be if the property owners do get upset that people are going into their property, into their yard, if there aren't parked on the sidewalk.
Again, if anybody has any parking violation complaints, feel free to give us a call. As far as parking on the sidewalk, you know, some of our streets are narrow, so I don't know where we tell our citizens to park at, if they can't park on the street. Why? Because a lot of those streets, I mean, for instance, I drove down, I think it's Butler, if you look at Butler, Dixon, those streets, there's no driveway parking, there's hardly any back parking. So if you tell those people not to park on the sidewalk a little bit and park in the street, you won't be able to get a fire truck, there will be another car down the two-way street. So I mean, we can, warning ticket, I'm giving tickets all day, but what do you tell those citizens that don't have nowhere to park? You know, I mean, I don't mind doing that, but man, to say this, and what are you all going to tell them when they start coming to the meeting to complain about they're getting ticketed and there's nowhere for them to actually park? So I mean, it's one of those things we have to be, I guess, a little resourceful about it when we're doing this, but there's areas where there's clearly enough street to be parked on and people park on the sidewalk. We will take care of those. All we do is ask the citizens in the public to give us a call. And then specifically if not, if you don't call the shit, the suspects, specifically, if you can call Corporal Wright, and that would be something that he can, he can make a, being another coordinated effort to address those issues.
So Chief, if some citizens have an issue with that, should they call him directly or just call the police department?
I will call the police department, ask for his extension. And we will give directive to our people to, once we get those, if they call directly to the front desk, and it's a call service to address that. With a, I guess, with a warning ticket, if it's somewhere where the streets aren't, you know, big enough, or a ticket where, a warning or a ticket where the streets are big enough for them to park, not be parking on the sidewalk.
I agree with you, I agree with your reasoning, if it's too narrow and they don't have any other places, but wherever they have the opportunity to park in the proper place, I think those are the areas that we need to take action on.
And if I could also, and I, I can cover what you're saying and what Chief Corley is saying. My issue is, I'm Tracy Toman, I am 5th Ward City Council, and all of the complaints that I used to get was because we had bad sidewalks. Well, as you know, the 5th Ward have redone a lot of sidewalks and now it's defeating the purpose because now we got vehicles. I mean, this is your taxpayers' dollars to get these sidewalks repaired, but now they're putting their vehicles back on these brand-new sidewalks that's been put down. So it's like, we're trying to fix one problem, but now it's going to cost the city again for the wear and tear of them parking vehicles on the sidewalks. I would just ask the residents in the 5th Ward, for me, and probably everywhere else too, if you can't park in your backyard, please park in your backyard. I get it, it's easier, you're closer probably to your front door, but it prohibits, if there is an emergency, for EMS or the fire trucks to get through if need be. So that's my concern. We got new sidewalks and now you're parking on those sidewalks.
Councilwoman Mordenar, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing up the whole ordinance and sharing with us, so thank you. So we just started the discussion on how to, what the scope of the problem is and how best to address it, you know? Yeah. Do you have any other comments, Councilman Corley?
No, I think she has been knocking on the door.
Okay. Council President Prisbalinski, any comments you have?
Yeah, I have a few comments. And first of all, I want to thank Kevin Parker for bringing this to the attention of the council, which it has been an issue for a long, long time. And I brought this up to different administrations as I've been on the council, and some of them said, yeah, we'll take a look at it, and other ones said, we don't want anything to do at that particular time. But I think this is the time that we take a look at it and try to make corrective actions if we can. And first of all, if we do put something in place, if we are going to enforce the ordinances that we have already, it's not about being punitive with people, but it is about trying to work with the public to make them understand what we're trying to do. These rules have been on the books for a long, long time. This one ordinance here, that was back when Richard Murphy was on the city council, I remember, putting that in place, and especially when the arts district was put into place, there were special ordinance put in place because they had brand-new sidewalks and they had brand-new curbs and they had brand-new greenways, and they didn't want anybody making that or breaking the law there so that it looks, and destroying what they put into place, but it kind of, to me, they kind of neglected the rest of the city. So, you know, and, and I took a ride down Hendrix Street yesterday, just in a few streets, because that's where, in my mind, a lot of this takes place. Hendrix, Waller, Jackson, what was the other one? That was over there. Waller, Dixon, Jackson, Hendrix. And take, for example, like on Hendrix, you know, you had six cars that were parked on sidewalks, one motorcycle, Waller Street, eight cars, and one trailer that was blocked and the whole sidewalk, I mean, from, and the trailer was still sticking out in the street, and it was parked all the way up to the bushes where you couldn't even access the sidewalk. I don't know how long that trailer was sitting there, but I'm sure that the trailer is still sitting there this morning. In a situation like that, if somebody wants to bring a trailer home, or they're using a trailer for work, they might have to find somewhere else to put that trailer, put it in their backyard, or make accommodations for it, if that's part of your business. You know, I know you're trying to make a living, but you can't use a sidewalk as a work equipment parking spot when it's made for children to ride their bikes up and down the sidewalk. It's made for parents to take strollers up and down the sidewalks. It's made for senior citizens to walk up and down the sidewalk, or to push someone around the neighborhood that wants to get some fresh air up and down the sidewalk in a wheelchair. These are the things that I look at, and I'm sure if we took a ride down those streets there this morning, yeah, some of those vehicles would still be, would still be parked there. And to me, you know, and that's why I called the fire department this morning to get them and Paul and Sean's here to talk about snowplows, right, in the winter kind, to get the vehicles down there, you know, what, what you, what your departments have to add in to this. But we just have to be able to work with the public, and one of the things that I was thinking about, take for example, if you live in this house here and like the chief said, well, there's no parking around some of the houses, and I understand that, and it's not like in the days when a family had one car. Well, now families have, you know, like three cars. I've seen some houses where in the yards, okay, close to your neighborhood, doctor, you know, right by the middle school, you know, there's four cars parked in the front yard. Just pull up, just pull up in the front yard and park there. Well, so if those, I guess if folks want to do that, then maybe there's going to have to be some type of procedure that they come to the police station, or how, or how it's going to be administered, that they get some kind of sticker, you know, that you put on your mailbox to say, hey, the city has allowed me to, you know, park, the way I'm parking now without getting a ticket or a violation. Okay? Just a thought. But yeah, I understand, there's exceptions to everything, but I think right now, there's more, we are being taken advantage of more than we are the exception that citizens need. And, you know, I would, if we could, Doctor.
Yeah, I'd like to ask for their comments, but before we get there, Councilman Mordenar, do you have any comments on this situation?
I do have, Doctor Corley, thank you for asking. What I've noticed up in my area in Ward 6, we don't have a lot of sidewalks there, but I've noticed a lot of parking in the lawns, okay? So people are actually up in the grass, and sometimes it is three, four, five vehicles that are doing that. So, and then I've seen good neighbors who have actually put in parking pads, you know, actually taking part of their lawn and turning it into a parking area, and I've seen people do that with stone and/or blacktop. So I think there's an apparent solution here, you know, if people really do need to park in their yards, then turn that area into a designated recognizable parking area. So that's what I have to say about it, and I know we're going to get into solutions later, so I have a number of things to say at that time.
Okay.
And I'm in Ward 6, I should let people know that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. So Deputy Chief Burris, you wanted, do you have any comments on this situation?
Just like I said, on the east side of the city, it's kind of tight to get a fire truck down some of those streets.
Okay, okay. Mr. Smith?
Yes, the winter time is critical. I'm familiar with these streets. I think, also, because we want to see Hendrix, Waller, and Jackson, we do have a snowmobile ward, it knows in effect, odds evenings as well as odd number of streets. Personally, it's troublesome to try and find a resolution to this, the troubled areas where these cars are parking at, maybe we should check to see if they truly have access to parking alleys, because we do service the alleys. So I don't know if that could possibly alleviate the situation or help me, I think that might be, well, we might want to look at, if it's even possible to do, that would possibly require no parking at all, you know, on a certain area where you have no access, just that's what they would have to do, access to alley. Other than that, I don't have too many more issues. I mean, there's some signage that can help, I'm open to that too, reference to no parking on sidewalks, but of course, keep in mind, if you post signage, they have to be able to park somewhere where they have access to or from the streets.
Thank you. Let's hear from the public, from the public comment, does anybody have any idea? Please go ahead.
Sure. I'm Kathleen Parker at 331 First Street over in Eastport, and I've been looking at the situation for a while because my grandchildren live with me, and it's hard for them to get, well, the younger ones in third grade, to get to the bus stop on some walk because people park on the sidewalk, and a child should not have to go into the street to walk to the bus stop. We have a resident who uses a wheelchair, you know, so he's tooling along the sidewalk, blocked by a vehicle. What does he do then? There is no cut, you know, in the, in the curb, so he can get out and go around. That's not right. And somebody else posted on our website, it's our website, that she lets her handicapped niece for a walk, she can't do it because of all the cars parked on the sidewalk. And we also have new sidewalks put in, and people are parking on those as well. I guess the way I look at it is that, I guess the basic component of a municipality is a citizen, a resident, one person. Everybody's a citizen. But we're giving accommodations to those who decide to violate the laws, we're giving them an upper-class citizenship. So we're saying that your citizenship as a car owner, as an auto owner, supersedes that of the right of every citizen, and that's not correct. And I also don't think that it's possible to be discretionary about who gets ticketed and who doesn't. Who's going to decide if that street is too narrow? That's not, I mean, that's no law. How are you going to put, how are you going to put that into law? It's impossible. So I think that we have to remember that people bought houses where they bought them, the sizes of the streets have not changed. They were the size that they were when they bought the house. They knew what they were getting into, whether you had a garage, or it didn't, or a driveway or not. So I don't know that that's the city's role to solve their problem for them. I think it's the homeowner's role to do something like Nancy suggested, and make it a legitimate, attractive parking path, but I don't think that, I don't think that our, it should be at the discretion of any, any police or fire department to decide which to, which are allowed and which are not. Other thing is, parking not close to your house is not an uncommon problem. In Chicago, people will park lots from their house. I know that's not the way we do it here, but it could become the way we do it. Or we could also make one of these streets, or have all parking on one side of the street, which would leave a wide swath for any emergency vehicle to get. I think that would be a chance.
Thank you for your suggestions. Any other comments here?
Yes, Scott Mallon, Turner County Place, I've made several notes, and there have been a lot of good comments here. There's a line between harassing people and accountability. And also, this kind of ties in with the broken window syndrome, which is, you can take care of the little problems, the big problems tend to get minimized. We're finding an industrialized past, a rust belt, we've had all the ills of a rust belt, midwestern rust belt city, but we're on the rise now, we're headed towards more of a tourism-centered economy, with a balanced economy, and the people we want to attract to come here see these minor, relatively minor issues, and it's off-putting, be it trash accumulating or cars parked, junk forever. Whatever we do, we need public education and outreach to change this pattern, because we've effectively allowed bad behavior to become the norm in some areas. And one person sees somebody doing something wrong, they're like, well, they're doing it, why can't I? So we also, we have to break the pattern of the past, and there'll be a resistance to this. There are different street sizes. Some are, you know, 30 feet wide and some are wider. And some accommodations should be made for our older, denser parts of the city where the streets might be too tight, and maybe going to one-way streets is one solution. Chicago is famous for its winter parking restrictions. Come November 1st or whatever day it is, you can't park on certain streets, no more than snow. And people have to figure out where to put their cars. It's famous. Every year, the radio is announcing this is happening, and every year, dozens if not hundreds of cars get towed at first, that first week. So change is painful for people, but if we want the city to work efficiently, move better, move forward, these are things to probably be considered. And I support us following the rules. I like the broken windows, take care of the little things, it shows people are paying attention, it shows we're not putting up with this stuff. And as everybody said, sidewalks are for children, seniors, wheelchairs, people with strollers, certainly not for parking. I don't know where the parts of the city are where the sidewalk is so close to the curb edge that they need to park that far over. Clearly, there are places. But if we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars on sidewalks, it's absolutely unacceptable, whether or not they have difficulty parking. Councilman Prisbalinski brought up the corner of Cleveland and Barker Road, which I had already noted, because yes, there's four cars parked in the front lawn, it's turned into a mud zone, it's across from the school, and there's another, and they have a driveway and garage. That family has at least five vehicles. And it's like, well, you don't get to park in your front lawn. It looks terrible. You know, between your driveway and just the regular parallel parking, you can accommodate your cars. So follow the rules, because this is terrible. So I appreciate we're having this meeting, I think there are some, there's a lot of fruit we can do. We don't want to be too punitive to start with, and maybe a phased approach, community outreach through Facebook, the press, the radio, a lot of warning tickets have been written here in the last, in July, that's great, but at some point, it has to escalate to tickets and even towing for egregious violators. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. And, you know, from what I have heard from this conversation is that we want to keep our city beautiful and nice, like we talked about, whether it's trash or parking, and I think we need to have a citywide initiative to make Michigan City proud in how we appear to the world outside, especially when we are trying to attract new businesses and people to move into our area. So I think I agree with all the comments that have been made, that we need to have an education program, sure, we feel punitive, but at the same time, bring to the attention of the folks who are habitual offenders, that this needs to change and give them options about what else to do to park in areas that are more reasonable rather than in the sidewalks. So what I was going to suggest was, Chief, if you can, after listening to this whole conversation, maybe come up with some potential solutions and then present it to us, and then we'll move forward with that. Any other suggestions to the chief?
Yeah, Doctor? Not for, not for the chief, but for the, for the fire department. You know, the streets that were mentioned, the four streets that I had mentioned, and there could be some smaller streets in town, but these are the four that I had mentioned. Does the fire department, right now, have any issues getting their biggest fire truck? You know, the big, I forget the name of, the 12?
Ladder truck.
Yeah, that big ladder truck. Will they have an issue getting that truck down Hendrix Street, Jackson Street, Waller Street, Dewey Street?
Well, it's not the fact that we have trouble getting down, we have to set it up, you know? We're in trouble with my line. You know, we have to set the truck up, set the outriggers out.
Yeah.
To let the ladder up. If we're on a short street, sometimes we might have to short jack the truck, because cars are parked on both sides of the streets.
Right.
So some of the one side of outriggers might have to go out at a certain point, instead of extend it all the way out like it's supposed to be, that's why we call short jacks. So those streets, definitely, if cars park on both sides of the streets, we're going to have to short jack one side.
Well, you can still operate at the truck in, in an efficient manner, no matter what it's used for.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then, and then the other, the other suggestion I have is possibly the city engineer should get involved with this and study the size of the streets, and if there is any possibility of making, you know, one of these streets, you know, like parking only on one side, or maybe a one-way street instead of a two-way street now, let, let the city engineer, you know, give them a month or two to do that work and come back with a suggestion to the, to the committee, because just, you know, since we have a committee meeting, it doesn't mean you just have to, you know, have one meeting and shut it down. We can also, you know, reconvene and come back with all this information in a month or two.
Okay.
Yeah, this won't be the only meeting. So anyway, just suggestions from me. So let me bring this, this example. So at Marquette, when they were having the issue with the speeding past the high school, and then they were going to put in that speed tray or whatever you call it, yeah, and then, and then that all occurred because of the double track, traffic off 11th coming over 10th, and then at that time, Councilman Paul Prisbalinski was on the council, we were having a meeting, talking about that issue, and he says, well, let's just take 9th Street, instead of having it going eastbound one way, let's make it a two-way street now. So we made it a two-way street within, I don't know, a couple of weeks, right Sean? Puts the signs up and everything.
A couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah, and like, so the whole problem, just by changing the direction of another street, it relieved a little of that traffic. So that's why I bring up, bringing the city engineer into this and letting him take a look at the, the streets and go from there.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have one last comment. Even though if we get them off of the street, off of the sidewalks, and we say park on the side or in the rear, we also want to keep in mind, if they park in the rear, in their backyard, that's still, we're looking at outside, out of mind because they're not on the streets, but if they start parking in their backyards, then that's still a sore eye for the residents. So we're still going to get complaints that, well, that's a sore eye, now we got five cars parked in the backyard, and when I want to go out, that's what I see. So, I mean, this is going to take a lot of looking into, I mean, we're not going to be able to please everyone, but we're going to have to definitely come up with a solution. come up with a solution.
Councilman Modernar, you said you had some suggestions?
Um, yeah, I was sort of looking at a phased-in approach with first education, second, a warning phase, third ticketing and fining, and fourth towing. And I know other people have mentioned parts of that, that sort of brings it all together. When from an educational perspective, I think we could do that at the city council meetings, of course. I would recommend having a citywide workshop explaining exactly why it's important to stay off of the sidewalks because of the cost of our investment by the city. I think people should know the total amount of money we've actually invested in these new sidewalks, so they know what is at risk. And then many people have talked about the importance of sidewalks already. And I think people are just not cognizant of all of the people that really depend on sidewalks to be able to get to different places in the city. And it's sort of like people looking at themselves only and not looking at the whole population and what that, what the consequences are of blocking a sidewalk. I think we, did I already mention them in a citywide workshop talking about all of these issues? And then also, I think we should put a fire and a water bill. We can do that very easily and anybody that gets a water bill that is advised, you know, what we found, just lands we have, and then how it's going to be implemented. So that was sort of my overall thought.
All of them. Actually, and I'm so glad we talked together, because I, we have heard so many good suggestions come out of this. And in, as part of education, by the way, Kathy Parker, I just want to say that until you brought this to the attention, actually, it was not on my radar that this was happening, you know? And, and then a lot of people are so busy with their own lives and that they are not, even though they may be doing it, if we bring it to their attention, I think they'll come to realize that it is causing some inconvenience to other people, you know? I, I think education is important and maybe we can all get together on the radio or something like that and have a little conversation about that. I think education is really a very important priority in this, you know? So I think moving forward, what I was thinking was, like Councilman Chris Valensky suggested, maybe get the city engineer involved in, in this conversation. And maybe after a couple of months, we'll reconvene and take all these ideas and then figure out how best to prioritize these and put it into action.
Yeah, we'll look at a plan as far as enforcement. To, you know, some of the suggestions here, I mean, maybe no parking on one side of the street is kind of, I still, at the end of the day, like, we'll take it all you want. But again, it's, it's going to be a situation the city has to deal with, how to accommodate, you know, folks. And I think, I don't think nobody is bigger than the other person, but I think also that there can be people who lived here for 20, 30, 40 years in these conditions and now all of a sudden, we're going to tell them, you have to do this because just, you know, I think we have to look at it both sides, but we'll do what we can with enforcement. I ask also that, you know, same, we are very accessible, we have every, every need you can think of or out in the public, that we don't have to, you know, come to a live situation and, you know, start, you know, you can call at any time. Phone lines open. I give out my personal cell phone, I'll use a work phone. So if you have some issues or if there's some areas that need to be addressed, feel free to give us a call and we'll address it. You know what I'm saying? Because we can't address them in a meeting. So anytime you guys want to call us, there's some complaints. Because the first time where there's a party place, nobody ever called us, nobody ever talked to us.
Called us, Ben.
We never talked to them.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, we'll address them and we'll look at them.
So I think.
We're going to work with anybody, we, you know, same, to, to make any problems.
So I think we'll, we'll get together. I want to thank Councilman Daisy Lee for taking the minutes. We will go over these and come up with a list of actionable items and priorities and prioritize them. And then we will get together with the chief for enforcement and the city engineer for other ideas about some of the streets that you mentioned. And then we'll reconvene in a couple of months then.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So what should we tell our constituents when they are walking on a sidewalk and if it's accessible, should they go into the property or should they go into the street? If a car is parked on the sidewalk, should they go?
Wherever they feel safe doing, you know, safest, have them perform. I would say, I mean, I don't think there's no definite answer there. I've, I've jogged on Carroll Street and there was cars on the sidewalk at one point. So I went wherever I, you know, wherever I thought was safe, well, it's a street, or even a dog down to the park, even the street or wherever. So I would say just wherever they feel safe doing at the time.
And then not only that, also keep in mind, too, part of that is city easement. I mean, it's property, but really, at the end of the day, that portion is partly city easement, so.
Great. Yes?
Yeah, Dr. And I know we talked about sidewalks, but I'm glad you brought up easements because to me, those kind of go hand in hand, because you got the sidewalk here and you got easement there. And I've noticed that also that folks park on easements and, you know, I got them in my head and I'm not good, you know, the skills that I can do that in private, but I see that a lot of times also. And I know everybody else does, you know, I'm sure. It's, it's not a blind fact. But, you know, and that's another issue that, that the city, we put those easements in, a lot of them are sodded, not a lot of them are weeds, being people park on them, but they don't maintain them. And yeah, at the end of the day, that's city property. Now, if you want to park on an easement, I guess parking on a sidewalk, and I'm not making an excuse for that, I guess, and like the chief was saying, some folks have lived in those situations for a lot of years. But then when it comes to the easements, a lot of folks move into those, they, you know, house or neighborhood or what have you, and boom, right away, they're just parking on easement because they think they can do that. Or they drive over the easement right to their front door and they think that's okay. That's not okay. You just can't drive up to your front door and think you're getting out, you can get out, walk into your house. I mean, we got city ordinances, we probably got more than what we have here about parking, you know? And that there, I think, is easier to correct than parking on sidewalks. Yeah. And we've had other people come to the council meetings and complain about folks parking on easements right across the street from them and they can see the day in, the day out. So, and, you know, another situation, you know, pickup truck and, pickup truck and trailer, boom, just back it up, park it on the city easement, because that's what I do for a living. Well, that's not your parking lot for your personal vehicles and your equipment. So that's another. And I have, in looking at this easement thing, there's folks that park in the easement. Then do you kind of take a ride around the neighborhood or the premises? You go in the backyard and the alley and there's plenty of parking behind the house, but some folks just decide they want to park by the front door, so they're going to park, they want to park on city property. So anyway, that's another. And getting back to the city engineer and maybe when the next meeting should be, you know, if we're going to get the city engineer involved, but I would give them a month, okay, and report back instead of waiting two months to get back together with this because this is, yeah, to me, this is too important to let it go on that long to get it, get some kind of solution, put into it. I mean, all he's got to do is, I think, bring up, right, Google or what have you, whatever the map is, and zoom in on those streets and he would try to take care of that in a short time.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott Mallon Turner, kind of place. A couple of things to confront the people who say, it's always been this way. Well, there's a new sheriff in town and we're, we have laws in place. We certainly don't need new ordinance, so we have all the laws we need. It's a matter of education, enforcement. We all forgot one major user of sidewalks, mail carriers. So, you know, seriously, to, to address Ms. Lee's concern, what, what should we sue somebody, what should we do if somebody confronts us if we're going into lawn? Well, this is a city, you yell back at them, don't block the sidewalk. He can't, if you're pregnant, I'll protect, that's pushback. You know, if they're going to break them, they're breaking the law. I can tell them, you're breaking the law. I have to get around your car.
What if it isn't their car?
Don't block the sidewalk. Call the city then. You know, I have a right of way here. Jog faster. And people are afraid of confrontation, but as part of living in the city, you can't be afraid of pushing back against bad behavior, in my opinion. I've been in cities my whole life. And as you can probably tell, I'm not afraid to push back a little bit. If somebody else is breaking the law, that's when it's okay, you know, in my opinion. I think it's against Indiana code to park on grass. You're supposed to have to be on an approved material, be it gravel or blacktop or whatnot. That's all. We already have the laws. It's just a matter of education. It's all people, there's new sheriff in town. And just because it's always been this way, we are trying to move forward now. City's on the rise.
Thank you. You know, I am grateful that all of you could join this morning and we have a lot of good ideas and we'll, we'll identify those and prioritize and then we'll get back together and we'll try to, we'll announce at the next city council meeting when we'll reconvene, but we'll do a little bit of homework before we, yes, chat.
If anybody has any business with these problems, please, our third is our office, so we could, we could thirdly look at it.
Okay. Chris, we'll be informed of any damage that we might miss, that we might not have a hand. Sure.
And then I'll just add, too, I think obviously, you know, missing from the table here is the planning and inspection department because, you know, code enforcement, right? Because they're, along with the police department, they're the next that can also enforce a lot of these violations, you know? Just, again, just something to think about so people know, too. You know, from our patrol division, we're dealing with over 3,000 calls per service per month. You know, obviously, parking, you know, as important as it is, generally falls on our priority scales.
Yes.
Just so, you know, so people are aware of that, too. So again, like we've all talked about, I think a coordinated effort, you know, again, whether between all entities is going to take place, right? Because it's not just something that we can go force, focus on day-to-day operations for parking violations, right? Because we have an abundance of other calls for service, you know, again, that generally are on the, you know, the higher priority. Again, I would encourage, right, if we're out for runs, out for walks, and there are people blocking sidewalks, if you don't want to confront, you know, if it's a continual problem, then, you know, notify us.
Sure.
And allow us to have that confrontation with the violators, right? So, but again, just to keep that in mind, and again, we need to get code enforcement to the table as well, so they can assist.
That's great, great ideas. So before we wrap it up, any other comments from anybody else?
I'm Kathy Parker, 331 First Street. I'm unclear about the roles of the police and code enforcement. Who should be contacted about a problem?
Police.
Okay.
Yeah, call the police. And then we'll, we will in the, get the code enforcement involved, but I think we should have just one number to call. All right, thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.